Good evening. It's August 4th, 2025, and I have six o'clock. I'll open the Battleground City Council workshop, and our city manager is going to introduce our esteemed guest.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have a study session that will be presented by Max Booth from Maddox, who's the Director of Development Engagement. He's going to present and discuss their plans for the Battleground Village Extension project. They did give an open house, I believe, on July 1. So if you were there, you got to hear some of this information. But tonight, he's here to discuss this with council and answer any questions you might have. So that I'm going to turn it over to Max.
Thank you, everybody, for having us. Appreciate your time. The presentation tonight is going to be a couple of different highlights. We want to formally introduce the project. As the city manager said, we did have an open house. We invited the surrounding community to this project, to an open house, to hear basically what we're going to present to you tonight, to get their feedback and thoughts on the proposed development. So we're going to spend a little bit of time talking about kind of who Maddox is and what our goals are, and then time about the project itself, the Battleground Village Extension, and ending with the discussion of the first two buildings we have planned for this that we're currently working on design for. So without anything further, our first slide here. Oh, I've got the clicker, don't I? All right. These are everything we're going to try to answer in this presentation. If we get to the end of it and there's something I haven't covered, by all means, we'd love to have all of your questions. Who we are. Maddox Industrial Transformers, our core business. About 350 people employed nationwide. We're a business that reconditions electrical transformers. With the one of four locations being here in Battleground. In Greenville, South Carolina, Batavia, Ohio, and an office in Idaho. We are an extremely family-oriented company who seeks to reinvest what we've made in the communities where our operations exist. So as such, we are investing in Battleground. Currently, we have about 82,000 square feet of building space in Battleground. About 115 acres of undeveloped dirt in Battleground. About 15 acres of yard space for Transformers and other operations in Battleground. We have 11 fully operational buildings and businesses in Battleground, employing roughly 125 people here with a few different businesses. We have a few pictures of some of those. You guys may or may not be familiar with. Allen Ernie's is one of our first projects outside of the core business of Maddox Industrial Transformer. Here's some progress pictures of the building straight north of that, which is slated to be a farmer's market, indoor year-round farmer's market, making use of the old Anderson Plastics facility. You may have been keeping up with some of the work that's going on there. That's scheduled to open in September. Here's a picture of the inside of it. I don't know if any of you have been in there before it was cleaned up, but it's a big change with some windows and fresh paint. Here is a picture of our primary production facility here in Battleground with the recent addition on the front end of it. That is our shop space where the work on the Transformers actually happens, and about 7,000 square feet of office space over on the south edge of Battleground Village on Commerce Avenue there. So why did we choose Battleground, or what is it about Battleground? The reason we care about Battleground and seek to reinvest in Battleground, this is where we all live and where we all work. This is where we're raising our families. And our goal here is really to steward Battleground's growth and helping retain its character and small-town charm. Battleground is growing. There's nothing we can do about that. We're not the kind of folks who say, well, now that we're here, nobody else should come. That's not tenable, anyway. But so we're taking our best crack at helping foster that growth in a direction that's consistent with what Battleground already is. Not looking to let it become something different. It's a great place to be, and all of us are here for that reason. So now, moving on to some of our plans for this project specifically, there's a vicinity map to give you a sense of where we're talking about here. This is 60-plus acres of undeveloped dirt just north of our facilities in Battleground Village on Commerce Avenue. Zooming in now. Excuse me. The top-left corner of that map is Southeast Rasmussen and Southeast Commerce Avenue, straight across from the existing retail commercial area in Battleground Village, extending all the way down to our warehouse and the old castle facility on the south edge, and then moving all the way to the east to the residential neighborhood over there on 20th Avenue. This map comprises a whole list of possible uses for this space. The shaded areas are meant to represent total outcomes, not necessarily exact locations of where those uses might be. The top-left corner, which is the northwest corner of this property, is where the first two buildings we're planning are slated to go. We've got the bulk of it becoming light industrial space, some of it becoming office space there in the purple, and then the 3.6 acres of kind of mixed-use space. We envision that mixed-use space being accessory to the other light industrial and office spaces, not a standalone shopping center or anything like that. But, you know, coffee shops in the corners of buildings and things like that. The flex space up at the far north end is kind of where we're proposing what really amounts to a civic center of sorts with the chapel and conference center. And then there's a few acres of land that we really don't have any solid vision for just yet that might be part of that civic center campus, if you will. Here's some pictures of the building we're proposing at the far north end. This is a picture looking southeast of the chapel building. The conference center, which is just east of that, sharing a parking lot. We had a recent community meeting in which we invited neighbors surrounding the subject site with, I don't recall the exact radius, but we got everybody within a couple thousand feet of anything touching these parcels. We invited about 550 residences. We included people who are renting, as well as people who own both houses and businesses in the area. We had 55 somewhat people show up to that. And some of the feedback we heard, we've put on here. Needing projects like ours, people were very excited about it. One person was very excited about more space used for employment, needing the jobs for tax base. Their quote is on the screen there. Overall, they were very excited to see Maddox putting their hands on another project. They've been very pleased with what they've seen so far. The next slide is some of the things that were maybe a bit more skeptical, or questions, or even objections, which we've listed there. "I had no idea this was happening. You're asking for input, but it all seems like it's a done deal and already set in stone." Those kind of comments are somewhat inevitable. You have a big plan that we've obviously spent a lot of time on, and so it does kind of feel like maybe it's a done deal. We were able to answer these objections and have good conversations with these folks. Everyone left there really satisfied with what they heard and pleased that we put the open house on. Somebody asked about trails. They mentioned a green space that exists already in Quail Reserve, the residential neighborhood to the east of 20th, and a trail that seems to go to nowhere. We absolutely intend to connect that trail to a network of trails inside our development that hopefully then feeds into existing Battleground Village. And ultimately, we'd love to see that connect all the way downtown as things continue to develop with Grace realignment and other projects. So someone objected or wondered that there was already so much vacant retail space in Battleground Village, and why would we think about more? At the crux of our development really is land for jobs in the kind of light industrial and office space. The retail and commercial space is just a small accessory, really to serve the added jobs we're bringing to the area. We also pointed out that it might seem like there's vacant retail space in Battleground Village, but I happen to know that there is no vacant space for lease in Battleground Village. There's people who choose to lease space who maybe aren't doing customer-facing activities in their, you know, offices and things like that. But I know this because we just, twice down the last two years, we've leased the only available space that was in there as they've come up for lease. So those are some of the objections we heard. So moving on, we are seeking a developer's agreement on this project. And I know sometimes that makes people uncomfortable to hear about a developer's agreement. So we wanted to kind of deal with that straight on in terms of what our desire was and what our hopes were. A project of this size and magnitude will take some time to build, and will take a significant investment on the front end before any of that's realized on the back end. And so the developer's agreement, in our mind, really seeks to look for time and predictability. We need some amount of time to be able to complete this and build it. And the predictability comes in, knowing that what we've planned and designed and come to terms on on the front end, will be able to be built as this project progresses. If we get to, you know, year 10 or 15 to build our last building in there, and some council far away from here filled with other people decides that the property should be used for something else or something like that, the developer's agreement will help us have a predictable runway of being able to build what we had kind of planned on the front end. So that's the basic crux of what we're looking for in other developer's agreement, time and predictability as we move through this whole project. So I don't want to spend too much time talking. I would like to take your questions, if you have any.
Council chime in. Thanks for the presentation. So this is a question more for city staff. Developer's agreement versus an area master plan for this? We've had, I've been here a while, and we've had some developer agreements. Some of them are good, some of them are not as good. But what's the advantage of a developer's agreement over a master plan of this area that would give them time to develop it out anyways, and maybe set it so that you don't have future councils changing what that would look like?
Well, staff, we've been talking about adopting code that has the master plan. I think what Max is indicating, for time, correct me if I'm wrong, the site plans, once they're approved, last for five years. So I think that's part of the issue. In terms of predictability, I don't know. I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong with development agreements. They're meant to provide exactly what he's requesting. In addition to things outside of code, that will be different. And I'm not really sure exactly what we're looking at in terms of the duration, besides the duration on what you would want in there. But I don't know if staff wants to chime in on. But we are looking at, we've been discussing master planning code because we think it's time to have that in our code, but it will take some time to draft that.
Yeah, to the city manager's point, our current code does not have a master plan section. We do think we're probably at a point that it's time to start drafting some language to create that for future developments. Developer agreement is a great tool. So again, at this time, given what the current code reads, that would really be the only tool available to be able to lock in kind of that approval length of time, if there's any variations at all. So happy to discuss further and bring to you some master code language, but at this time, that's not available for us to utilize.
Could it roll into that, though? Could we start with a developer's agreement and then go, once we put in? And the only reason I bring this up is the village itself was a developer's agreement. And you know, I know when I came on council in 2012, there was some issues with that. It changed a lot. There was a lot of things changing, and it came to the point where council just said, no, no more. And we're not changing anything. And that's my, it's not my fear, but that's what I don't want to happen. Once we start down this path, you know, with a developer's agreement, and we've seen this with other developer's agreements that we have done here, that sometimes it takes longer to get them going than we would originally think was happening. The Deacon property would be a good example of that. You know, we thought it was going to be a year or two, and I think they're just starting to break ground on it. So a lot of that's out of our control because of, it could be financing, it could be all kinds of stuff that go into this. And what we don't want, I think if we go down this route, is a future council coming in and going, well, you didn't do what you said you were going to do, and then start causing problems, bringing it back in, or changing, or those type of things, where maybe a master plan wouldn't do that. And so that's what I'm wondering, is if we could start with a developer's agreement, go through our code, change it, could it roll into a master plan? That, you know, these type of areas take some time. You know, we talked to high school not too long ago. Those take time. They're not something that's just going to happen just because someone wants to do it. And two years from now, it could change even more. So that's my only concern. I don't have a concern with a developer's agreement. I just know sometimes they can take longer than both sides want. And you don't want that to change when councils change.
If I may say one thing, the developer's agreement we'd be looking for for this particular project really seeks to kind of set a new standard, a new paradigm for how developer's agreements work. Oftentimes, there's bigger trade-offs and things like that, promises for infrastructure and promises for certain amounts of jobs or whatever takes place there. And our real goal is not to, you know, exact a bunch of those types of things out of the city. Our goal is to just really lay that groundwork, lay a runway for us to be able to roll down and with predictability and confidence, be able to continue making these investments. And so our developer's agreement really is going to seek to be outcome-based, where we're not talking about a site plan that's approved a certain way that we're hoping you give us approval or time on for 15 years. What we're looking for is, here's a bandwidth of possible outcomes. We're dreaming of, you know, X amount of jobs, which could generate X amount of trips on the low end. Or if everything goes really well and we bring in some high-intensity users, it could be this many jobs and this many trips and this much sewer usage on the high end, establishing a lot on the front end to where then, in terms of having to continue to change developer's agreement throughout the years because of this need or that need, it's really kind of, it's taken a step back to say, here's the possible outcomes, low instant intensity, highest intensity. Here's the thresholds for mitigating those impacts, you know, roads and sewers and other things like that. And then being able to run with those things and those proposed uses within this space over the next, you know, 15 or 20 years or whatever it takes, versus having a bunch of really specific language about trade-offs on infrastructure and things like that, that it's a tough game, you know. I know some of us have talked about this in other contexts before. Try and tell me what's going to happen in 15 years from now in terms of the market. Oh, I'm closing a shopping mall, and then COVID happens. And, you know, it's like shopping malls aren't a thing anymore. So it's a really tough thing to get nailed down. And that's kind of why we're trying to take a different approach at this particular one. So I don't know if that helps answer that. You know, the master plan thing, I'm not sure exactly what's entailed in light of the fact that the city doesn't really have a code provisions for that at the moment. But if that helps us accomplish this goal, we'd be happy to help pursue that as well, so.
Well, the only reason I bring it up is, you know, I spent 10 years back in Washington, DC, talking about our industrial area and how underserved it was, and how we couldn't get businesses to come in here and transportation, infrastructure, all that kind of stuff. And then we had the developer's agreement that we had. It was adding apartments and things to lands that were like, you know, it doesn't really fit what we're trying to do there. And then, you know, one company comes into town, and all of our industrial area now is full, and we need more. And so, I mean, those changes can happen pretty quick, but they do take, when they happen, they can happen quick. But it's taken a long time to fill out the industrial space that we have. And so now we're wondering where we're going to get industrial space. Then I think this is a great, this is a great thing. I just want to make sure that it doesn't, it doesn't hurt you guys or the city when, you know, half of us are gone. And because over 15 years, you know, that development of the village took quite a bit of time over that time. And there was a lot of people that lost their bandwidth because it was And there was a lot of people that lost their bandwidth because it was supposed to be this and it was supposed to be that. And we just kind of walked away and then we had a council that just said, no, no more. And that's what I don't want to see happen is, but I don't think that is, I think you guys will do what you say you're going to do, but just to protect both us and you.
We wholeheartedly agree. I mean, if some part of this leaves the city missing something or not whole, then it ultimately doesn't work for everybody, you know. We've got to be able to build this thing out in a way that's sustainable for the city to be able to manage the infrastructure in the years to come. Otherwise, those are, and those are our services in the future, you know, we need all that stuff. So absolutely, we would definitely agree and want to seek to make this mutually beneficial to where everybody gets what they need out of it.
Thank you. I'll jump in if nobody else, something forward. First of all, beautiful project and it's exciting to see you pick Battleground and happy that you're here. I would echo the citizens' comments about the tax base and I'm sure people are tired of me saying it, but I still firmly believe that a lot of our issue with funding mechanism for the school comes down to the fact that we're a bedroom community and the tax base and the tax load compared to other cities that have ports sits higher on our single-family homes. So having jobs come in, I think is key to making this a livable city, really. That may seem like an oxymoron, but I truly believe it is beneficial to live, work and play in the city. So key. I have one question. This might be staff-related or just kind of general. With the Grace realignment, are we going to have some properties that would allow? Because when we, I mean, there's going to be some road we're not going to be using, I assume. Is there some potential for connectivity and working with developers to help make that connectivity between the village and downtown? As well as parking?
Yeah, so Grace on its own will have sidewalks on both sides of the sides of the road. So you'll essentially have from Rasmussen, a connection all the way up. Both our transportation plan and parks plan actually call for the trail along the railroad to ultimately be put. So you would have that. You know, what Max is talking about is bringing some trails over kind of from that residential area. So that would get through, it would get to the sidewalks that are on commerce and all of that. So yeah, you would have good connectivity through there. There's probably likely to be some property left over after we're done with the project. I think we've talked about one for the old town and possibly parking or, you know, whatever may happen with it. But yeah, long and short is definitely be a lot of connectivity with that project and a little bit of leftover property.
And for those that aren't aware, we got the last sign-off on the Grace realignment. So that is now a go. Is that correct?
Yeah, so the environmental sign-off is done. So it moves us into the right-of-way stage so we can start working through that process.
And I think that's key, and especially the walking trails with Allen Ernie's. You know, so yeah, I need to give some of this back. But if it's anything like your current projects in town, it'll be a great addition to the city.
Wonderful. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Max and to Maddox. I think this is a super exciting thing happening. I'm just so excited about this. I can't hardly sit still. So I, again, just echoing what Mayor expressed regarding the tax base and also understanding the concerns that Deputy Mayor Bowman expressed. I think obviously there's some things we need to look at. You've obviously learned a lot since the last time we went through this that I'm not going to be aware of. So I think it's a good opportunity to set the pace for a new development that works going forward with all the new stakeholders and the potential repercussions and risks that there would be on both sides. I also, I'm just really happy to have a company that's not just investing to bring jobs, but they're talking about the lives of the people who are employed there and what they experience in this community, whether it's schools or whether it's amenities, it's shopping, it's the whole life experience. And so I think that's what really is something for us to grab onto and be excited about. So I just, thank you. Yeah, we want to do the right thing. And the other thing I wanted to add to that was I think the timing is perfect for the master plan. And I would just be concerned that obviously takes a little bit of time. So I would not want doing that to hold us back on what we need to do to move forward. So I think we're all in agreement that the, you know, a development agreement and then at the same time consecutively be moving forward with the master plan. Thank you.
Hi. So I just want to say that I am very excited. I did have the opportunity to meet with Max a while back about this project and I thought he had some good ideas when it came to the developer agreement, how you wanted to have like the sliding, basically the mechanism that showed your outcomes for space and all that. And it was just going to be a continuous, ongoing scale. I thought that was a really awesome idea and I hadn't seen anything like that before. And then I thought it was reasonable that you want the investments that you make in the community to stay there when you're actually ready to use it. So instead of you paying to upgrade all these intersections or, you know, areas around there that you're not going to use it right away, but I thought that was reasonable that we would make sure that your credits or whatever were still there when you got to it. But anyways, I'm perfectly fine doing, looking into a developer's agreement with them. Like I said, nothing, everything seemed reasonable when talking to you and I'm super excited about it. And I can't wait to see it completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Go ahead.
So I appreciate that you got the city involved and you opened it up for all the citizens to come. And I think that says a lot to the character of your company and I'm appreciative of that. And I'm thankful that you brought that for us, especially the trails. Because I got to talk to some of the citizens who live out in that area and they were talking about the trail. And that's the first time I'd been out there two years ago and I was like, you guys have trails over here? And they're like, yeah, but it doesn't go anywhere. So I'm very thankful to hear that you're going to try to put that together. And I'm looking forward to the project and what we can do to move this forward so we can get those jobs here for our citizens here in Battleground. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
I'm just going to tack on to all these folks and say thank you so much. That the fact that you did approach and include us and the citizens, again, like Victoria said, speaks volumes. You put a lot of thought into this and, you know, DAs do have a little bit of a hesitation, but I think that it's, this is a good idea. You thought it through and I just am very happy about it. So thanks for bringing that forward.
Thank you, Counselor.
All right, I'm going to pipe in just real quick. Mr. Booth, thank you for your time and your efforts towards this. Everyone's laughing. So for full disclosure for everyone in the public, I am employed by Max. Nonetheless, we are not making any decisions on this developer's agreement at the moment, so I am free to speak. And what I will say is Battleground needs development like this. Battleground needs sustainable jobs, keeping jobs and income revenue right here in the town. And it's companies like Maddox that are doing that. And so couldn't be more proud to be employed with a company like that. Great culture, amazing people. With that said, these kind of developer agreements typically, I would say the word developer agreement is a scary thing, but this is not a developer agreement that requires an MFTE, doesn't require property taxes to come out. And so it's, I think, a different spin on that. I completely understand what you're doing and why we're doing it as far as development takes time. And so I appreciate that and the candor that you've had to come in here. The development project looks amazing from the photos. Super excited to see something like that in Battleground and just thanks for your time and appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor.
So what are we looking at for a timeline in a perfect world?
I'm glad you asked. That's a good question. What we're aiming for is kind of two parallel tracks running together. Our first phase, the chapel and conference center buildings, we are 75% of the way through designing the buildings themselves and working on a site plan right now. We anticipate submittal of the site plan for land use review in September and hope to have building permits and groundbreaking. Well, we'll do some early grading this fall yet, but hope to have building permits and actual groundbreaking on the building early next year in the spring on the two buildings. Those two buildings are being processed under the basic provisions of the code. They'll run parallel and they'll eventually be enveloped into the whole developer's agreement as part of the project. But there's not a whole bunch of special asks or anything there that's going on. So those are just kind of running their own parallel track. The larger development and agreement that goes with that, our goal is to have something on staff's desk for review the beginning of October and something in front of you guys for ratification late November or early December this year. So that's the rough timeline. More specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I just hope maybe you could speak to the civic center and what that encompasses for those that may not be aware.
Sure. Yeah, thank you for asking. The civic center broadly speaking is what we've been referring to for the whole campus up there at the north end of this project. Through the chapel building that you've seen some pictures of here, that's roughly 14,000 square feet and then a 25,000 square foot conference center, civic center if you like for better, for other words. And the idea is going to be a fully staffed, full commercial kitchen event space capable of hosting 500 people for dinner or something like 1,000 people in conference-style seating, breakout rooms and all the rest of that there. The idea that it's really, it was derived from needs we have within our organization for that type of space for dinners we have annually. And ultimately, it's really difficult to find places like that without going across the river or up to the casino. So there's nothing real close here. So that was really the catalyst for some of the thinking behind it. But we want it to be a full-service, fully-functioning, public-facing conference center that all sorts of people could make use of. The chapel building will be a component of that. Right now, the anticipation is that the chapel building will be leased to a church for Sunday use and then used for weddings for other events in association with the conference center, public-facing on other days of the week. So that's kind of the vision, if I answered your question.
Yeah, you did. Just to put that 25,000 square foot conference center in perspective, what is, does anybody know what the Hilton is downtown?
It's a good question. I should know the answer to that. Tim? About 30,000.
Pretty close to the same.
Yep.
That's good for us. For those of us that don't live in the world, it's good to have a real comparison, so.
Yeah, it'll be very comparable to what the services provided there, except for I'm much biased. I think it'll be much better, but.
No comment. Which begs the question then, obviously a conference center, there's other accessories that would go along.
Yes, sir.
And that's kind of what, I'm assuming that's what the flex is kind of, as this thing develops, decisions may just become very readily apparent.
Yeah, I don't want to get too far over my skis here and promise something we can't deliver, but there certainly is discussions of a hotel in our future. Very conceptual at this point. We don't have anything on paper. We don't know anything about running hotels, but that won't stop us from giving it a try. So it's pretty conceptual, but we do realize that's probably a necessary component to actually activate 25,000 square feet of event space meaningfully. And so that flex space in the top corner that's been talked about there, we did have another recent property acquisition just across the street that might be better suited for such a project. But yeah, it really is in flux right now, which kind of brings us back to the whole idea or structure of the developer's agreement is to really focus on an outcome of impacts versus particular uses or what size and shape buildings go where and all the rest of that stuff. Focus on jobs and uses and impacts and then deliver those as the plans develop, so.
Awesome. Counsel? All right, anything else? No? All good? All right, well, with that, well, that's the end of our work session, I believe. Yeah? Nothing else on the agenda? So I appreciate you coming, appreciate the information and really appreciate the partnership.
Yeah, absolutely. Likewise. Thank you, Councillors.
Good evening Battleground. It is August 4th. I have seven o'clock. With that, we'll call this regular meeting to order. If you're able, please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of meedles to the bride and to the son. To the public of which is sands, one nation under God, neither missile, liberty and justice.
Which, Ms. Hilly? Roll, please.
Mayor McCoy.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bowman.
Here.
Councilmember Kipers.
Here.
Councilmember Ferrer.
Present.
Councilmember DeRozier.
Here.
Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Overholzer.
Here.
And the clerk is present. That concludes the roll.
Thank you. With that brings us to agenda approval. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for agenda approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that was a motion by Deputy Mayor Bowman and a second by Councilmember Ferrer. Summary, summary reports and presentations. Counsel member, anything to report out today on committees you sit in, sit on the council's behalf on? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the mayor's report.
All is an exciting day when we have a.
An exciting day when we have a new police officer. So Chief, will you do the honors?
CJ, you come up. You can tell when you look, chest size, we resemble a lot of each other. He came in, I was like, I don't think I got it best to fit him. This is Carl John. He goes by CJ Cortez. Prior to working here, he was a deputy sheriff for the state of Hawaii for almost 10 years. Joining us tonight is his family, his wife, Ashlyn. His daughters, Jay Lynn, Tatiana, I get that one right, and Zylan, and then sons, Jaden and Braxton. CJ was born on the island of Wahoo and was raised on the Big Island. He initially went to college for engineering. He realized the amount of math that was going to be needed for that degree, and he quickly switched to electrical. And finished up his school, his degree in fire science. There's a whole nother story there. Councilman Bowman, please. Not with the science. He's an avid fisherman, hunting, and as you can tell, physical fitness, likes exploring new places. Family truly means everything to CJ. He attended the six-month law enforcement academy in Hawaii, and one of his classmates was Officer Leha, who works for us. CJ and Max worked together for a number of years, and in 2020, Officer Kabantin went through and joined them. Although CJ wants to make sure he takes zero responsibility for some of Jeff's actions, even though he may or may not have trained him in quite a bit of that. CJ's already fit in well with our agency. He's going to be attending the equivalency academy in October. As you're going to see, he is just truly a wonderful, wonderful fit. Incredible human being, very, very kind. I asked him, you know, so how's it fitting in? And he said, a lot of it's like home. And I said, what does that mean? He said, the family structure here. He said, that's how we were treated in Hawaii. And he said, I know I made the right choice here. So he's going to do just a wonderful service for us. So CJ.
Sorry, I'm a little stage fright. I'd like to thank everyone for allowing me to come, me and my family, to come to the city of Battleground and work here. You know, like I told Chief, it reminds me a lot of home. In Hawaii, there's a lot of, not a clique, but like, I don't know how to say it. Everyone is connected. And I feel that here at the station with amongst my peers and also on the, on, on the streets. And the beat, the other day I was at Walmart and someone came up to me. Oh, I'm sorry. I was at Walmart. I was handling something. And we seen him at Dutch Bros. And he's like, hey, I seen you at Walmart. I was like, oh, okay. He's wearing uniform, doing your thing. No, thank you so much for doing what you do. You know, and, and that right there, I was like, wow, this is awesome. You know, the people here. They, they love police. They're their first responders, you know. But to cut it short, I just want to thank everyone for allowing me and my family to come. And I look forward to working with everyone. And don't be afraid to say hi. I'm friendly. But yes, thank you.
Okay, we're, take the oath.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Carl John Cortez.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And of.
And of.
The state of Washington.
The state of Washington.
I will abide by.
I will abide by.
The law enforcement.
The law enforcement.
Code of ethics.
Code of ethics.
And will diligently.
And will diligently.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all duties.
Perform all duties.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
For the city of Battleground.
For the city of Battleground.
County of Clark.
County of Clark.
State of Washington.
State of Washington.
As such duties.
As such duties.
Are prescribed by law.
Are prescribed by law.
Thank you so much and for sharing your family with us. Please stay safe out there. And so happy to hear the community is welcoming. That's something we hear from all our police officers and something this community is really proud of as we back our blue. So, thank you. All right, looks like we have a new employee as well. Kristin, you have an introduction for us?
So, good evening, counsel. It's my pleasure to introduce you to our new associate planner, Brandon McNellis. Brandon has a bachelor's in both urban planning and sociology and a master of science degree in psychology. He is married and has a three-year-old daughter. For the past year, bless him, Brandon and his spouse opened and operated a childcare center in Spokane. And then prior to that, he worked as a natural resource planner for Skagit County for about four and a half years. Brandon enjoys the outdoors and loves to learn.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you so much to everyone. It's been a really smooth transition for us. Everyone's been really welcoming. And it made it a great experience. So, thank you. I appreciate it. And I look forward to spending more time here.
So what I learned, there's not much difference between permits and childcare? Yeah. Okay. Herding cats. Okay, we have, oh, Kristin, you're back up again, but we have a guest here from the Clark County Commission on Aging, Mr. Lund. And please. I think this is an annual report we get, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah.
How's that? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Now, where, where will I see the slide? Up here? There we go. Great. Hi, I'm Ken Lund. I'm with the Commission on Aging. And thank you very much for allowing us to be here tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to come and present our annual report with updates for what occurred in 2024 and what we have planned as we round out 2025. Now, we've got about 475 slides, but it only takes about three hours. But I'm so used to saying next slide. It's, I'm going to have to just say it so I hit the button. But anyway, the purpose of this presentation is to update the city council on the, on the commission of aging's work in 2024. This evening, we'll be sharing some background information about the commission, giving you a high-level overview about the agent readiness plan, providing an outline of the commission's focus for 2024, which was emergency preparedness, acquainting you with the Silver Citizens Award, and sharing a summary of a few additional things the council has been actively involved in. To start off, we'd like to give you some background on the commission and review the net, the work we completed during 2024. Clark County is everywhere in the county, is anticipating a surge in the number of residents that are 60 or better. By 2035, and let that number stick in your head for a second, 2035, one in four Clark County residents will be 60 or older. The reason they say let that stick in your mind is that's probably dated from the census, 2020 census. And I've been in senior living 40 years, and I can see what's happening in Clark County. And I'll tell you that we'll hit that number five years before that. And a couple of statistics that aren't in the presentation that kind of go hand in glove with that, especially as you're closer to the urban center for Clark County, is that in the homeless population, currently one in five are 55 plus or technically a senior. And that number nationally is expected to be as high or 60 plus as 35% of the homeless population within the next five years. So it's something that in urban centers in particular, that we really need to focus our planning on. So for what you're doing in that regard, thank you very much. With the knowledge of what's coming, of the coming change, the council was approved for the age, our original agent readiness plan in 2012 and formed a nine-member volunteer commission on aging. The commission's charges to provide leadership in addressing the special needs of the aging population to manage and assist with the implementation of the county, county's aging readiness plan and to update the plan as needed. The aging readiness plan is a long-term planning document that assesses the county's readiness to serve a growing, a growing aging population. The recommendations in the aging readiness plan focus on topics such as missing or lacking public infrastructure, support for social services, and zoning and planning standards that encourage an age-friendly community that older adults can thrive in. The 10-year update of the plan was adopted by the county council in September of 2023. To ensure the plan reflected the community's needs, public engagement was a focus of the updated plan. It centered on what makes Clark County an age-friendly place and what opportunities and hurdles there are for making improvement. Engagement activities included a survey of older adults, focus group meetings, online input opportunities, and three public workshops to evaluate existing strategies, brainstorm new ideas, and prioritize strategies for improvements in the community. The commission was honored to learn that the updated plan was awarded in 2024, the Governor's Smart Communities Awards from the Washington State Department of Commerce. The Governor's Smart Communities Award highlight effective implementation of the state's Growth Management Act and other local and regional planning resources. The plan received the judge's merit award, which recognizes agency success in more than one judged category. The plan includes 18 goals that are implemented through 67 strategies. These strategies include, are intended to improve the community's capacity to support its growing older population and ultimately benefit all ages. There's five chapters. The first chapter is healthy communities. And it describes the current opportunities in Clark County for older adults to access healthy food, parks, and recreation, goods and services. It also sets out goals for improving access to each of these resources. The housing chapter provides strategies to address the various housing needs of the aging community, such as multi-generational living options and affordable units. It also supports construction that enables people to age in place, which generally means staying in their home or community as their needs change. The mobility chapter includes strategies based on transportation and mobility, mobility needs for older adults. It outlines ways the older adults tend to travel and areas that could use improvements, such as public transit, ADA accessibility, and others. The civic involvement chapter holds strategies based on increased civic involvement opportunities for older adults. This includes expanding engagement and volunteer opportunities, such as community events, participating in the local government, and participating in advocacy work. The final chapter in emergency is emergency preparedness, which is what we focused on in 2024. The emergency preparedness chapter provides strategies that outline how older adults would be affected by natural or human-caused disasters. In other ways, the county can improve the health and safety of older adults. It explains ways older adults could be impacted by the various things, disease, wildfires, flooding, extreme heat, etc., and ways to prepare older adults for these hazards. As mentioned, the plan implementation efforts in 2024 focused on emergency preparedness, specifically developing. specifically developing an older adult-specific alert system, communications channels, encouraging neighborhood associations and homeowners associations to work with CRESSA to educate community members about emergency preparedness and the implementation of local programming. The commission dedicated eight monthly meetings to increase awareness about what emergency preparedness is and what it could look like on a personal, neighborhood, community, and regional level. The commission invites experts from CRESSA, Clark County's Regional Emergency Services Agency, to share in their Prepare for a Year Plan. And their Prepare for a Year Plan is on their website, but it's really cool, especially for families that don't know a lot about emergency preparedness. And this is me plugging CRESSA, but it takes you step by step, just little bite-sized pieces. What should I do this month? So at the end of a six-month period, 12-month period, you've got a very robust plan for your family, and it doesn't take a lot of effort to get there. So for those of you that are interested, it's on the CRESSA website. Commission members learned about many important lessons, including how to assemble go-bags, how to create robust communication networks with people living both near us and far away. CRESSA staff also highlighted some of the challenges aging adults may experience and pinpointed solutions to some of these challenges. Commission members were surprised to learn that on any given day, there are about 100 emergency response people that are on active duty. So in the event of an emergency in Clark County, the reality is, is each of us needs to have a plan and be prepared to have an indeterminate level of self-sufficiency. With each monthly presentation, we began to understand that as emergencies unfold, we need to keep a positive mindset and focus on what will happen next. Our ability to remain safe dramatically increases with careful pre-planning, which includes problem-solving individual challenges. Especially significant was an increased recognition of the fear that older adults may have about potential emergency or disaster situations and the importance of outlining strategies on an individual communication plan. It also helped bridge dialogues around difficult issues, such as how to problem-solve mobility concerns, such as having stairways, reliance on public transportation or assisted transportation, and identifying socially isolated members in our community. The CRESSA Commission on Aging partnership, including discussions with community members attending our monthly meetings, underscore the need to post information and resources specific for an aging adult directly to the CRESSA website. We invite you to visit cresa.911.org. That's C-R-E-S-A dot 911 dot org. That's where the new information's been placed, specific to seniors. When you get to that point in their search engine, type in seniors and it'll take you to that information. In addition to the focus on emergency preparedness, the commission presented its 2024 Annual Silver Citizen Award to encourage and support older adults for their contributions. Clark County Commission on Aging established the Silver Citizens Program to recognize older adults that go above and beyond in service. The award recognizes the valuable contributions older adults make to the vitality of their community and is open to any county resident 60 years or better who has enhanced the community throughout their life's work, engagement of others, volunteerism, and/or other impactful acts of service to the community for any age group. The co-winners for 2024 were Bev Jones and Larry Smith. Bev is a battleground resident and served within the community professionally for 43 years as a nurse. She's active in many organizations, including the Lions Club, North Clark County's Commission Food Bank, Community Food Bank, and the Battleground Education Foundation. Larry is a resident of Vancouver and served as city councillor, mayor pro temp, and is a commissioner on aging for a full six-year term. He also is involved in many organizations and co-founded CMAC, the Community Military Appreciation Committee. You must be actuating that for me. Thank you very much. And finally, the commission worked, were included, members and staff giving presentations at several local community meetings in 2024. This included neighborhood associations, city and town council meetings, advisory groups, et cetera. Commission members also provided a presence at meetings for the Public Health Advisory Council, the Aging and Development Resource Network, also known as ADRN, and the Area Agency on Aging and Disabilities of Southwest Washington. That's a mouthful. Also now known as ADSWA and their advisory council. We also cosponsored a proclamation for National Caregivers Month. That's the end of our formal presentation. Thank you much for allowing me to be here. If you have any questions at all, I'd be happy to answer them to the best of my ability.
Counsel, questions? Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you very much for the informative presentation and for all the work that you and all the volunteers do. It's an important service. The question I had, so you talked briefly about the process you went through to identify gaps and needs in the community, and you were doing that countywide. So I'm wondering, do you have it broken down specifically that we could glean out some information to Battleground and say, these are things that you identified? And we can then turn around and make sure those are being addressed in our plans?
There isn't a formal data analytics bank that we can pull on as an entity, is what I can tell you, is I've been in senior living and post-acute care for 40 years, and I know where that data is and how to mine it. If there's somebody that you would like for me to hook up with, I can show them how to glean that information pretty easily from national and regional databases. But it's an interesting question, and the reason it's an interesting question, I gave you the fear stat of one in four people being homeless, being senior, blah, blah, blah. Here's the reality. Boomers are the richest generation in history. But as what they never tell you is the but. And the but is, yes, there's this massive amount of wealth in the boomer generation, but it's held by 10 to 15% of that generation. 85% of that generation, and I'm the tail end of that, but I'm just coming into that pipeline. But 85% of that population is likely to be broke by the time they're 75. And so the question becomes, if that's the case, what resources do we have? Starting, you know, if you think of a Maslowian hierarchy, you start with shelter. And as people outstrip their resources and they, fairly good-sized that population ages 85, 90, 100 years old, we've got to have a strategy, and it's going to have to be a more urbanized strategy to be able to deliver services.
I did have a second question. That's specific to emergency preparedness. And maybe the answer is the same as the previous question, but are there specific things towards battleground in emergency preparedness that need to be considered or addressed? Maybe that's outside of what the rest of the county has to deal with.
The person that you're going to want to contact for that, and she's an enormous, just a great source of information for this, is Jody Blackwell. Is that, I believe that's Jody's last name, Blackwell. She's with CRESSA. And again, if you have a contact person here, I'll make sure that the two hook up.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You bet.
So anybody else? Quick questions? Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it, Ken. Appreciate the information, even though some of it made me, well, not like the statistics, but especially the one about how, you know, how old I'm going to be in 10 years. But other than that, thank you.
Thirty-five, it's all good.
Yeah. What anniversary? My 29th birthday is next. Uh, this brings us to Citizens Communications. We only have one person signed up, and I think she knows the rules. So I'm going to skip over most of the, uh, most of my spiel here. Do we have anybody signed up online? Ms. Hilly? No? All right. Jessica?
No, we do not.
The floor is yours for your three minutes.
Hello, city council. I'm Jessica Cole. I would like to share some facts and history with you about how the word homosexual first entered the Bible based on research by Kathy Baldock and Ed Oxford. The word homosexual first appeared in any English Bible with the publication of the Revised Standard Version, that's the RSV, in 1946. The RSV committee combined two Greek words, arsenacoitai and malakos, previously understood as references to exploitive or effeminate behaviors, and mistranslated them as the word homosexual. In 2018, researchers Kathy and Ed discovered archive letters at Yale University showing the RSV Translation Committee Chair acknowledged the error after a seminarian wrote to them in the 1950s. The committee chair agreed the term was incorrect and later changed it in 1971 to sexual perverts. But the damage was done. Modern Bible translations and church teachings had already incorporated the 1946 wording. As newer Bibles followed the RSV's incorrect wording, the misinterpretation of these Greek terms contributed significantly to the spread of anti-gay theology in conservative Christian communities. It shaped decades of harmful doctrine despite having no basis in early biblical texts or theological tradition. The word homosexual does not appear in the original Greek texts, in earlier Bible translations, or in any version before 1946. Leading theologians and scholars now affirm that the Greek words in question refer to abusive, exploitive, or effeminate behavior, not loving same-sex relationships. This mistranslation has contributed to long-lasting harm rooted not in scripture, but in modern misunderstanding. For a deeper look into this history, you can watch the documentary, 1946: The Mistranslation That Shifted Culture. And it features Kathy Baldock and Ed Oxford. It traces how the single translation choice reshaped the church doctrine and public opinion. And if you would like to watch it, it can be, the documentary can be found on Amazon. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Anybody else in the audience? Okay. With that, I'll close this portion of Citizens Communications. This brings us to Consent Agenda. And if the council allow me, which will become apparent towards the end, I'm going to read the items that are on the consent agenda. Item number A is our study session minutes. Item B is our city regular council meeting minutes. C is claim vouchers. D is payroll. E is Eaton Boulevard improvements. And F is 20th Avenue Pathway bid award. With that, counsel, I would entertain a motion.
Second?
Who is the second? A motion by Deputy Mayor Bowman, second by Councilmember Kipers. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Brings us to the business portion of the communication, and it looks like we have an ordinance. Megan, you have the floor.
Good evening, council. So before you, you have an ordinance, 2025-11, amending the 2025 budget. So as we come to getting closer to year end, we have some project true-ups in here related to things that went out to bid this year that we didn't carry over enough funds or timing in which projects were not done at the end of 2025, but will be done in 2026 or a portion of them. We also have a pass-through grant from Department of Commerce to chip funds for the infrastructure for Vancouver Housing Authority and the Weaver Commons Project, which we're still waiting on the final determination of when that's to begin or if it's to move through. We have some items related to the senior center, some furniture that was not fully budgeted for. And if there's any other questions, we're looking to set a public hearing for the second meeting in September, September 18th.
Before we do that, did we get any communications regarding this business item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. If we could, we'll start with discussion, then we'll read the title. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
I was just going to move to set the public hearing for ordinance 2511, budget amendment.
Can we get it?
October 18th. Is that what you wanted? No.
September.
September.
The clerk will read the title of the ordinance. Ordinance number 2025-11, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Battleground, Washington, amending the city's 2025 budget, ordinance 2024-12.
And I'm still waiting for a second on that motion.
Second from Ferrer.
Thank you, Councilmember Ferrer. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and a financial overview report as well.
Yes. Okay, so we're two quarters into 2025, and we have some great information to share. So our general sales tax is at 1.8 million compared to 1.7 million last year, which is about a 7.1% increase, where we saw a decrease last year at the same time compared to 2023. So trajectory is going up, which is great. However, if you look at the criminal justice sales tax, that is at a 0% increase. That is a county-wide sales tax that gets shared back to the city on a per capita basis. So countywide, they're not seeing the same trajectory up as we are seeing within the city of Battleground. So our public safety sales tax, there was a 3.5% increase, and then our TBD sales tax at 6.9%. Looking at the history back to 2018, you can see that there was a large jump, and then we are on track to exceed 2024 if things continue as they are now. Looking at the overall, what goes to the state for what is collected within the city of Battleground, about 14 million has gone to the state, 1.5 million to CTRAN, and then to the county, 326,000, and then mental health, criminal, transportation, and public safety. It's about 214,000 in total, and that's the 0.1%. So overall, we have about $218 million worth of gross receipts within the city of Battleground as an estimate for four months of activity. Looking at where that is coming from in comparison to the prior quarter last year, I'm not sure why it is not moving on Zoom. Oh, oh, there we go. Okay. So looking at our retail trade, it is down just slightly, but looking at our construction, it is up significantly. We're about 20%, whereas last year we were at 12%. And then looking at our wholesale trade, we are up quite a bit as well. And then food services and lodging, our local eateries are doing very, very well. So, positive news. Looking at our development activity, this is also surprising considering countywide, this isn't the case in all the jurisdictions. We're at 112 residential permits compared to 80 in 2024. Multi-family, we're at two compared to zero. And then commercial, we're tied at three. Overall, looking at our development activity, we are seeing an overall increase of about $3 million, which is an 82.9% increase from 2024. And you can see significantly the transportation impact fees. In large part, this is due to the multifamily. When multifamilies come in, we get a significant chunk of money in TIF and PIF and RSDCs because it's charged per unit and then per trips for multifamily. So.
And this is just second quarter, so that was 600,000 in parking back fees just in one quarter?
Correct. Well, that's for both quarters, so for two quarters. Yes. Nope, you're good. So we're about double what we were last year. And then also, the other thing to note in here is development review. That has kicked up significantly. It's for a couple of years, we were lagging a little bit low, and now we're back where we were a few years ago before we had all our buildings. So there's some significant things in the works in the hopper to say that. Looking at our interest income, we're about 2 million across all funds, which is the same as last year, which we'll take it because it's, again, record highs. So overall, our APR is at 4.1% compared to 4.4% in 2024. So we've gotten, I think we're at two and a half years of significant interest income, which is fantastic. Looking at our general fund overall, we're on target with our revenues, 26.7 million budget. We're at 14.6 million in actual. Our expenditures were at 13.1 compared to their 27 budget. Looking at our real estate excise tax, this is also back up to where it was back in 2021 and 2022. Home sales have taken off. We're almost at where we were in 2024 at the end of. Home sales have taken off. We're almost at where we were in twenty twenty four at the end of, and we're only halfway through. So things are still moving, even with interest rates being significant. Looking at our street fund, we are at thirty-nine point two percent budget to actual for revenues, eighteen point nine percent for the street expenditures. Before I move on, is there any questions about the street fund specifically to preservation or where things are at? Yep, okay. So looking at our parks fund, we're at fifty-four point six percent in our parks revenue. Our community center, our event center, excuse me, is doing very, very well. Their revenues is up significantly. And looking at our park expenditures, we're at forty-five point nine percent budget to actual. Looking at our storm drainage fund, we're at forty-three point six percent budget to actual for revenue and thirty-three point five percent for expenditures. Water fund, twenty-four point eight percent budget to actual. This has to do with the grant funds that we budget for, for the reservoir as well as the... No, it's just the reservoir. Mind blank, there's too many projects. I don't know how Mark keeps track of them all. And then water expenditures, we're at thirty-four percent, again, due to those capital and where they're at and the timing of those expenses. Sewer fund, we're at thirty-three point four percent budget to actual in our revenue and fifty-five point five percent in our expenses. The ninety-second Avenue pump station is going very, very well. We're getting very close to being done with those expenditures. So that's why that's actually on target for what we would expect because our capital is where it's supposed to be. So fantastic. Looking at our debt outstanding, we're still doing very, very well, two point four million outstanding in our Scott and Way bond, one point three million in our water revenue bond, and then our sewer bond at four point seven million. And then looking at our overall composition of where things are housed, we're still keeping the majority of our funds at the state LGIP, the investment pool with another portion at the county pool. And then we have some long-term investments locking in those interest rates of, at the higher amount for longer term. And with that, are there any questions?
Deputy Mayor Bowman.
So on, what is our interest rate on this, like the sewer revenue bond?
So our sewer revenue bond, it's not a significant amount. I believe it's at three, three point five.
So is the reason we're not paying those off is because we're making more interest?
Correct. So we're, we're paying more in principal each year, so we're budgeting in an additional two hundred thousand in principal every year. So we've actually, if we continue, we're slated to save two million dollars in interest as well as pay it off about sixteen years early. And so that was the trajectory on. If it becomes to where interest rates go down below and then we don't... You understand what I'm saying? So if we don't, if that nexus becomes in which it's better to pay it off versus have that money invested, then that's what we would do.
Okay, and, and what is our total revenue in our sewer account right now?
It's a good chunk. So we're at close to twenty-eight million, I want to say, between the two. So we're definitely slated. I just actually got done, which we'll be talking about as we get into the budget season, the rate review and where it's at, especially as that ninety-second Avenue comes into play. We're definitely taking into account that parallel force main and/or alternative, and making sure we have the funds to where it's not going to be a rate-funded project ultimately.
So, so Mark is, we won't have an idea of what that parallel force main will cost, projected real dollars for twenty thirty-five, roughly twenty thirty?
Yeah, so DCY right now is working on their sewer plan, just like we all are working on our sewer plan, and they're looking at kind of the various options that we talked about. So by the end of the year into first quarter of next year, we should have kind of a lock on what that project looks like. If it's truly the parallel force main, if it's taking ninety-second and going west, you know, the various options that are out there. Once that's locked, then we'll have, be able to do good estimates on, on what that's going to cost. Can we phase it? Those sorts of decisions to truly know how much it's going to be and when we need that funding.
Okay, I just want to make sure, like, anyone that's listening understands that twenty-eight million dollars is not in our general fund. That is dedicated to an enterprise fund for sewer, and we anticipate somewhere probably forty million plus if we do a parallel force main, correct?
Yeah, the, the original project, which is the full parallel force main, is in forty-four, I think, or something in that range.
But then you have to include, I think it's about fifty-four million in what DCY gave me because they have to include the design as well as the construction. So there's a little bit of funds before that, and I will say the majority of that twenty-eight million is from system development charges that are paid by each home that comes into the city, and that's specifically restricted for capacity projects, which would be the parallel force main. So we couldn't use that even for general operations in sewer, so.
So we're basically halfway there of, of what they're, what we potentially could be projecting to be a fifty-four million dollar project. We're halfway there.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and to the Deputy Mayor's point, I perused our development map, and I just did a cursory count of the amount of dirt being moved and how many houses it is, which makes me wonder if that date won't be moved up, especially with the presentation we had at six o'clock.
Yeah, I mean, if, if it keeps going the way it's going, it, it would start to creep because we estimate around to two hundred and fifty ERUs a year to get to that point. And I got the report the other day, and I think we were like one eighty, one seventy, something like that through July or June, I think. So, yeah, it, the last few years have been healthy in, in terms of how many ERUs are coming in.
But with that, we also will get, as they come, we'll be getting those FDCs. So it's kind of a, as long as the credits aren't significant, which that's the other piece of these subdivisions because a good chunk of them get the sewer SEC credits.
Awesome, thank you. Any other questions, council? All right. Speed limits.
Good evening, council. Give me a second, pull up my presentation. Okay, so recently, we've been talking about speed limits throughout the city, and today, we're going to focus a little bit more on neighborhoods. So I'll kind of go back, talk about state law just briefly again, talk about our current status, talk about a request that we received that actually led to this kind of conversation, some options we may look at, and then questions and discussion. So as a reminder, RCW controls, or essentially state law, RCW controls speed limits. And so maximum lawful speed on city streets is twenty-five miles per hour. That speed can be altered per the RCW. In regards to neighborhood streets, the city may establish a speed limit of twenty miles per hour in residential areas and business districts without doing an engineering study. So currently, our neighborhood speed limits are twenty-five miles per hour. There are three exceptions to that. In the Mill Creek Meadows subdivision and the Hidden Meadows subdivision, the city several years back did traffic calming projects. As part of those projects, the speed limits were lowered to twenty as, as kind of a part of that project. Additionally, school zones during school hours, typically ours are when flashing. There's, I think, a couple left over where it's when children are present. Generally, ours are when flashing, so those would be the exceptions. As I mentioned, those first couple were related to traffic calming projects. The Riverbend HOA has requested twenty mile per hour speed limits in their neighborhood. So that's the newer neighborhood. It's on the northeast corner of SR five oh three and Twenty-Fifth Street. So what I wanted to do today is kind of bring some options that we might look at to address this request. I'm sure there'll be other requests in the future, so I kind of want to get council's perspective on what we'd like to do. I did a little research. Generally, what I can find is Washington jurisdictions, pick one or the other. You know, either they're twenty-five, they're good with it, or they decide kind of across the board to go to twenty miles per hour. There are a couple other ideas. There's essentially what we've done. Bellevue used to do it as well prior to twenty twenty four. Or in twenty twenty four, they decided to go fully with twenty miles per hour. But previously, they had done similar to us, where they looked on, on a case-by-case basis, did some improvements in the neighborhood, and as part of that, lowered it to twenty. Another option could be is letting neighborhood groups look at it, similar to what we do with traffic calming. If you go to our website, you'll see while we don't have a, in, or a city program for traffic calming, we allow neighborhood groups to, to do it if they choose to. Some items I'd like to think about, as you discussed, is consistency. It's always good having that. There's costs. The more things you change, the more signs you need, the more costs there can be. And then speed changes require council approval. So if we were to do something on a case-by-case basis, every time this would come up, it would have to go to council. Whereas if you did a whole, you know, decided to do nothing or did a whole across the board, it'd be one shot and we'd be done with it. So that's kind of the end of what I wanted to say, so I'd be open for questions and discussion about the topic.
Councilmember DeRozers?
Yep. I can get my microphone. I just want to say, I would prefer twenty throughout the whole, whole city and all the neighborhoods. When I, I always thought it was twenty, so I was always going twenty until I realized in some of the neighborhoods that they're twenty-five mile per hour, and it seems way too fast for, in the neighborhoods with all the cars parked on both sides and you can't see to get out. It just seems like if we could go lower, it'd be safer and maybe be less noise for neighborhoods. I don't see how it would be a bad thing. I think it could be a good thing for us, so, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Councilmember DeRozers. I think that, that part of the issue that we have, I, I think if we have wider streets and, and if you had wider streets, not cars parking on the street, those type of things, you could probably do twenty-five mile an hour. But if you look in the neighborhoods today, I was going through the new one over by Daybreak that, that New Tradition built, and I was doing eighteen mile an hour there and felt like I was flying through that neighborhood. And so just because of how narrow our streets are now with our development codes, and we're trying to get more lots in, and we're trying to, to have, you know, affordable housing, and then putting cars on those streets, I think, I think it's, it's too fast at twenty-five. And, and even like, man, I see, I see delivery trucks, you know? There's a big blue one that comes through quite often, and those guys don't even understand what twenty-five is, you know? And they, they must be paid by the, the drop because they fly through these neighborhoods. And, and, you know, my neighborhood has a little bit bigger sidewalks and streets. It was built in ninety-eight, and, and, you know, I've had some discussions with some of those guys asking where they live so I can know where I need to drive. But, but I think that when you get into the neighborhoods where kids are, those type of things, that twenty makes more sense than twenty-five. We got twenty-five on Parkway. You know, and that's kind of goes through residential areas, but, but not as much as where homes are and kids are playing, that kind of stuff. I like twenty better. Thank you.
Councilmember Overholzer?
Yeah, couldn't agree more with what both council members said, hey, DeRozers and Deputy Mayor Bowman. I do have a question, though. What would, what would the cost to the city? What would we incur as far as cost of signage or removal of signs? Do we just blanket it? Like, what would be the approach there?
I would probably look at a citywide approach where there's a way to do it where you put kind of your entrances to the city, where you say citywide is a speed unless otherwise posted. That would probably end up with the fewest amount of signs. So, you know, you'd look at your main entrances into town, you'd throw a twenty up, and then those streets that we, you know, like your thirty-fives and your others, they would continue to have those. But when you first come in, you would see it. That way, we could actually, I think, eliminate a lot of the signs in the neighborhoods because you would, you know, once you enter the city, you're been told that, that the speed limit's there. You'd probably have some in various places just to help enhance the message. But I think, I haven't looked at the count, sign count yet, but I think it could be done relatively inexpensively if we're not signing every neighborhood, if we're doing more of a citywide approach as you enter.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
I just wanted to get...
Councilmember Kipers?
Thank you. Mark, I just want a clarification on what you just said. You're coming in, so Parkway, for example, or Twenty-Fifth, since we're speaking specifically to Riverbend, and off full disclosure, that's where I live. And so we do have an interest in reducing that, especially because we've got another hundred-plus homes coming in right behind us. So traffic's increasing. So you said we would take Twenty-Fifth would stay twenty-five miles per hour, correct?
Correct.
Coming into a subdivision, you would have initial signs that are twenty miles per hour and then not have other signs in the subdivision. That's kind of how you would mitigate the extra costs.
So you would actually have it on Twenty-Fifth, so your main entrances into the city. So like your five oh three, five oh two, some of the northern, eastern, western streets would have them. So if you were coming down five oh three, turned on to Twenty-Fifth, you would have a sign that would say twenty miles per hour, and then there's a citywide placard that goes with it. Additionally, you would have the, you'd still have the twenty-five for Twenty-Fifth because it's an exception to that citywide rule. Then you wouldn't have any, any in the subdivision. So that's where you would save as all those current signs. Now, you would eliminate all of those and just have them at the entrances to the city.
Sounds confusing to me. So anyway, we could figure out those kinds of logistics, but I think the idea would be good to just understand, okay, if, if we went across the board and re-signed, how much is that? Or if we do an alternative that you recommend, how much would that be? That probably would be helpful.
Councilmember Ferrer?
Mayor. So I was looking at the residential speed limits for the Battleground Municipal Code, ten point zero eight point zero six zero, and it mentions kind of doing the whole blanket thing because I was concerned with the cost as well. Like, would it be, I mean, what are we, if we're talking about costs, what are the benefits of those costs? And not knowing exactly what those costs would be to be putting up all those signs, so I was thinking a more affordable way to do that would be like blanketing, like you said. And off that municipal code, it said, no person stop, can stop, operate a motive vehicle at a speed greater than twenty-five miles per hour upon any street within the corporate limits of the city of Battleground, except where specifically posted to the contrary or on which another speed limit is established. So we could just, ideally, just say twenty, right?
Yeah, so that, that's the code that would change to twenty, and then you still want to like notice people out in the driving public. So that's why your main entrance is to the city. You have the speed citywide, and then anytime they see roads posted with different speed limit, they know there they can do it. But outside of those specifically posted roads, it is twenty throughout.
So like twenty miles per hour unless otherwise noted or posted?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does that change your mind? All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like, I like the idea of it, so I'd like to see it come back, and I think you have a clear majority of council that feels the same way. Ministry of Reports?
Thank you, Mayor. On Thursday, we had our, last Thursday, July thirty-first, we had our first community court, and it was a, it was a huge success. We had incredible collaboration between the judge, the prosecutor, the public defenders, court staff, DSHS, and social service providers. So we had a few individuals that we conducted that court with, and we were excited about our first experience. And so the next one will be August twenty-eighth, since it's once a month so far.
And that was last Thursday? Sorry, can I get that date? I know you can watch.
July thirty-one, yeah, last Thursday. And then there's been a lot of... And then there's been a lot of media around this, but if you haven't had a chance to go out to the skate park and look at the murals that Will Sykes. Painted for us, he generously donated his time. And he created just a wonderful piece of art. And I think it took him about two, the two weeks in in heat that's such. You might not even want to be outside, let alone wearing a mask and painting all day long. So I'm super thankful. For him and his dedication to the city. So. If you have had a chance to go up there and take a look at it. Hopefully it'll take some time to do that. And then tomorrow's a really busy day. Starting with the grand opening of the Kiwanis Park Improvements and a showdown. Between the mayor manager and the two chiefs. Ten o'clock. It's gonna be fun. So.
No tasers.
Yeah. And then later in the evening, as you all hopefully have on your calendar, is National Night Out from six to eight. At Kiwanis Park as well. So that's all I have to report.
This brings us to Council Communications. Anything from the council? What? Oh, might be nice. I'm sorry, what? Oh, yeah, but what I was going to is. I'd be curious to see if there's something we could do for the artist. As a city. Recognition or some sort of.
Thank you. Yeah, we, staff already had that in mind. We were going to invite Will come to a future city council meeting and kind of bookend it. He was here. Talked to you when he pitched the project. And so now the project is finished. Have him come in and and share a little bit more of his experience with you.
Yeah, well, yeah.
The idea, but he has like people that he encounters and lots of good stories to share.
Yeah, that's very cool. And then for those that aren't aware, the the September second. City Council meeting has been canceled. And I think that's it for Councilmember Communications. Anything else from the council? Alright, that'll bring us to executive session. We'll take a little bit of a break in between. So pursuant to RCW forty two dot thirty dot one ten. Parenthesis one, parenthesis B, the city council enters that. Will enter an executive session, consider their selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such considerations would cause a likelihood of increased price. Session will last ten minutes commencing at eight oh five and ending at eight fifteen with possible action to follow. Mm hmm. Because there's possible action, we'll come back out, take possible action.
All right, it is 8:15. There is no action. However, pursuant to RCW 42-30-110 (G), the City Council will enter an executive session to review the performance of a public employee. The session will last 15 minutes commencing at 8:16 and ending at 8:31 with possible action to follow. It is 8:31. I'll call this meeting back to order and open the floor for a motion.
Mayor, I motion to give authority to the review committee or yourself, the mayor, to renegotiate the city manager's contract. Second by DeRochers.
Motion by Councilmember Ferrer, second by Councilmember DeRochers to renegotiate city manager contract pursuant to her review. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that concludes our action and that concludes the meeting. It's 8:31. The next, sorry, the next regular council meeting will be August 18th at 7:00 PM with a study session at 6:00. The study session will be held at the City of Battleground Public Works Operations Center located at 1308 Southeast Grace Avenue. And we are adjourned.
Yeah, you can walk it.